Okay, well, I guess everyone's here. So, this is the regular meeting of Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, July 10th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call a meeting to order, and our first order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag. If everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with no bounds.
Would the secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Mr. Steenberg.
Here.
Mr. Walz.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Bazi.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
In full court.
Next, we need approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion's made and supported. Any comments on the motion? Hearing none, take your role, please.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Bazi.
Aye.
Mr. Walz.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of June 12th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of June 12th, 2025.
Support.
Motion's made and supported. Any corrections or comments on the motion? Hearing none, take your role.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Bazi.
Aye.
Mr. Walz.
Aye.
Mr. Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. If someone in the audience wishes to comment on an item that's not on the agenda tonight, it's your opportunity to come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to our first business item. It's PPL 25-0017, request to establish Phase Two of the Folk or Commons Mixed Use Project on a vacant lot on the south side of Pardo, east of Middlebelt Road. Henry's owned the site from CBD Central Business District to PUD Planned Unit Development. Mr. Ortega, would you like to start us off?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. As just summarized, we are here tonight to consider the Phase Two of the proposed Folk or Commons Plan Development. This particular site in question is on Pardo Road, east of Middlebelt. So, it is a 1.14 acre vacant lot. So, it currently has no improvements on the site. And as you recall, the applicant is proposing a plan development at the corner of southeast corner of Ford Road and Middlebelt to demolish the buildings at the site and construct a four-story mixed-use building, which would have commercial on the first floor and three stories of residential above. So, during the course of the review, the planning commission did for the initial project, the mixed-use building, you made the determination that the 93 parking spaces on the site directly adjacent to the building would not provide sufficient parking requirements for both for the mix of uses, both the residence and the commercial site. And so, a condition of their approval for Phase One was that they submit a revised Phase Two that would allow for an additional parking spaces on property they own, which is this. So, that's the reason for this tonight. And so, a key aspect of this entire review this evening is the fact that this is, as discussed, it's a component of the mixed-use project that is going to be necessary for it to function in the immediate term for vehicle-oriented uses, making sure that all residents have a place to park their vehicles and making sure that the visitors to the site predominantly in the beginning will definitely be vehicle-oriented. So, but in order to go through this phase, we must begin with this process tonight of looking at the plot plan and the plan development concept. So, it's the same process going through as Phase One, which this will be the initial review, will hold a public hearing with regards to whether they're for the rezoning from Central Business District to Plan Development, and then would make a recommendation to planning through the city council. City Council would then adopt, would then consider that Phase Two. For your information, the Phase One plan development rezoning has gone to the planning commission, and they did grant approval to that.
In the council?
At council.
Yeah.
Yes. Got to keep them on.
Hard to remember which night it is.
Exactly, right, yeah. So, that night, city council did actually approve the Phase One Plan Development rezoning. So, with regards to Phase One, now the applicant is working on site plan and construction drawings that will be coming towards to you, the planning commission for your, because that's the next aspect of this, because once again, these are concept plans. Now, they must submit detailed site plans to you for that construction. But to keep things moving along, this is the Phase Two Plan Development Concept Review. And so, we do have to use the same criteria, but the issue here is that like all of these, for example, when we first, you have my letter, I'm going to briefly try and briefly summarize this. Basically, the eligibility criteria for a plan development, starting at the top of page three, whether there's a recognizable and sustainable benefit, whether it meets the, has the ability to have the availability of public services and bringing the proximity to the site, whether this is compatible with a master plan. We do find all of these things are valid because, and true, because this Phase Two is supporting that Phase One, and that Phase One is definitely in compliance with the master plan. It's the vision for the downtown to have a mixed-use district. So, this Phase Two will supplement that Phase One. And so, we believe that's why it meets the eligibility criteria. Similarly, moving on to design standards for our plan development, in terms of the location within the city, the permitted uses, and also the political-based standards and also regulatory flexibility. This particular aspect of Phase Two, they are not requesting any modifications of existing standards. They're proposing right now that the plant, the parking lot, will be developed in complete compliance with our current parking requirements. So, therefore, there is no need for regulatory flexibility of Phase Two. And so, there's nothing with regards to the design of this at a plan, at a concept level that will necessitate granting any type of modification to our standards. They're fully agreement of designing this in compliance with our current standards. And then, once again, just reiterate, this is supplementing and being supportive of that Phase One. So, therefore, that's why we believe that meets that. Design standards, and then finally, the standards of approval, standards of approval for plan development, including conformance with the plan development concept, compatibility with adjacent uses, and things like impact on traffic. Those are summarized on page five of my review letter. We do believe that this Phase Two aspect of the site will, especially as presented now, will, does meet the standards of approval, because once again, it's intended to reinforce and ensure that the Phase One will function adequately. The parking will make sure that those residents and those customers will have the ability to visit the site, park on the site, and then conduct their business. So, we do believe that because this is supplementing that Phase One and that Phase One meets all standards of approval, then this does meet the standards of approval as well. So, in the end, we do believe that this Phase Two is in compliance with the master plan goals and objectives, compliance with the plan development zoning ordinance requirements. We would advise planning commission to recommend to city council granting the plan development review and approval contingent upon this Phase Two receiving site plan review and approval as well. I can take any questions at the appropriate time.
Any questions for Mr. Ortega?
Myself. We were looking at, what, 56 spots off-site across?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Yeah, it went up to seventy-three, and so, they are proposing that number.
And as I recall, it was a one-acre plot, and they were looking to use about half of that.
That's correct. So, this Phase Two does show the southern portion of this particular lot. So, the part, the fronts on John Hawk would be vacant right now, unimproved. So, there's the potential for that to be a future Phase Three, and most likely, it could be possibly a type of, another type of residential development, like maybe townhouses or something to that effect.
Which was behind that parking to the south.
Correct. So, you know, once again, as a planned development, they would have the ability to, they would have to come back for the Phase Three, and they could talk about different types of development on that vacant portion in the future. And it's just speculation at this point, but if the residential, that increase of density is, serves the needs of the market and provides new residents, the potential there to put in some townhouse development probably would be the most appropriate at this time, because it's, provides that transition too from the higher density on Ford, townhomes, and then the single-family homes on the other side of John Hawk. But that's just speculation at this point, though. They would eventually submit that in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I was just going to make a comment, and I was looking at our May 8th, excuse me, meeting notes, and this is exactly what we asked them to do prior to bringing back the site plan. So, it's consistent with our request.
Yes.
Is there a representative of the applicant here that wishes to speak?
Had mentioned.
Okay, then we can move on. And open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to come forward and make comments concerning this project? Okay, seeing no one interested in coming forward, then we'll move on. Do we have any written communications concerning this?
No.
All right, then, at 6:42, I'll close the public hearing. And open it up to discussion from the planning commission. Comments or questions?
So, on, if there are page, section three, when it says availability and capacity of public services, what does it entail when it says does not require any public services?
That would require about utilities, any kind of utilities. So, if this was, when we had our discussion about the Phase One, we look at the density of the use and whether there's access to water mains, sewer mains, stormwater management, and then other facilities such as electricity and, you know, gas. But at this point, because this is, this phase of the development is only for parking, really, the only thing they're going to be needing is electricity for lighting for the parking lot. So, there's no extensive demand on our utility system.
One thing that I see a lot of cities do in parking lots like this is they'll do a police light. Is that something that we could put a recommendation in for? Would that be now, or would that be more appropriate later?
That would be appropriate during site plan review. It's always interesting to make sure that we include the latest aspects of public safety, so it'd be something we could speak to the police chief about and see if that's something they'd be, they think is beneficial to the neighborhood.
We need a motion for recommendation, and in that motion, I would like to see us mention that the site should have a minimum of 73 parking spaces and also, along with getting final approval from the planning commission. Someone cares to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve with the...
We need to make a motion to recommend.
Recommend, okay. With the inclusion that it be a minimum of 73 parking spaces for off-street parking, with a total not to be less than, let's see, what does it work out to be? 165? I think that's our total.
167.
167, okay. With a total not to be less than 167 spots combined.
And contention on site plan approval?
And contention of on-site plan approval, of course.
Support.
Any comments on the motion? Comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, would you take your role, please?
Mr. Steenberg.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Daniels.
Aye.
Mr. Bazi.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Walz.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, next item. PPD 25-0006, request for special land use and site plan approval to establish a carryout restaurant at 1847 slash 1859 Ingster Road in the C1 Local Business District. Okay, Mr. Ortega?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For those of you that may recall, this is a newly constructed multi-tenant building. The lot address for the entire property is 1847 Ingster. The applicant is proposing to go into one of the units, the further, northernmost unit, which actually has the address of 1859 Ingster, to establish a carryout restaurant. The site is zone C1 Local Business, and within our local business district, we do require carryout restaurants to obtain special land use review and approval, which is the reason they're here this evening. This is mainly due to the fact that our local business is intended to be more of a slightly less commercial development. While principal uses that are permitted by right on C1 are office uses, service uses, and retail uses, restaurants can sometimes be a little bit more intense. So, that's why they're, while they're permitted by right in C2 and C3, typically along Ford Road, on Ingster, we take the extra step of requiring special land use approval. So, just summarizing my review letter, looking at the special land use criteria, the first thing we take a look at is compatibility with adjacent uses. To the, directly adjacent to the site, it is residential, single-family to the west, to the south, and then to the east across, on the other side of Ingster Road, and then to the north, there's a duplex on the north side of John, of John Hawk right there. However, Ingster Road corridor does have a wide variety and mix of commercial uses in the area, and directly past these individual, single-family, these single-family residential structures on Ingster are other commercial businesses. They are more of a nine-to-five nature. They're more, one's a dentist office, one used to be a veterinary office. So, one aspect of this is, as I mentioned, when it comes to carryout restaurants, sometimes aspects that might increase density, excuse me, intensity, meaning the level of activity on the site, is the amount of customers coming in and out, and then also hours of operation. If they tend to operate later in the evening, then that level of activity is more prolonged than a normal nine-to-five situation. But it's still a restaurant, so the ability to serve, provide dinner options for people is an important aspect of the proposed use. So, one other key aspect we think of this proposed site, it's a four-unit building. Right now, there's a barber shop, there's a pharmacy, and then a vacant unit. So, this would be the third of four units occupied, so this would be the only carryout restaurant on the site. So, one aspect, if you wanted, so, a lot of the multi-tenant buildings along Ingster do have one or two restaurant uses. However, sometimes they can get pretty busy from time, during those mealtimes. So, one aspect you might want to consider when ensuring compatibility is possibly limiting the number of carryout restaurants on this particular site, because there is another vacant unit in the building. So, maybe if it was limited to one or two, that would ensure compatibility and less intense use. And also, you may want to just have a discussion with the applicant with regards to the proposed hours of operation. If you limited the hours of operation, that would be another aspect you can control to ensure compatibility, because really, that's the most, what the most standout issue you consider with regards to this, these uses. When it comes to compatibility with the master plan, the master plan does envision Ingster becoming more commercial over time, and we're seeing that as this site has been developed and others are being developed, at least certain portions of Ingster. Because this is closer to Ford Road corridor, the idea of having some commercial in close proximity makes sense. But then looking at other aspects, also impact on traffic, the site, while they would, while a carryout restaurant would increase some traffic, it's not going to be anything substantial that Ingster Road corridor couldn't handle. It's a high-volume corridor, it's designed to accommodate high volume, and having a carryout, an additional carryout restaurant on the corridor shouldn't suddenly negatively impact the traffic volumes on the site, given the current conditions of Ingster Road corridor. So, in the end, we do believe that the site does meet the criteria for special land use review, excuse me, and approval. And so, we would advise the planning commission that if you do make that the same determination, that any recommendation you provide to the city council include a conditions regarding having discussion about and the number of carryout restaurants and the number of hours of operation of them, but also substantiating your findings with the fact that it is compatible with the master plan, will not be having an impact on traffic, and is adequately serviced by public utilities as well. And if you like, you can briefly go over site plan issues, because it's very minimal, because we do have to do a site plan tonight. As I mentioned, it's a brand-new construction. The entire site is in full compliance with our current standards for a commercial development, but taking a look at parking and the aspect of parking with regards to this site. The site was developed with a mixed, a, what we call a shopping center criteria for applying for the, for the parking. The site currently has 20 parking spaces. However, with, with carryout restaurants, we have to consider the number of tables, number of employees, and the size of the waiting area, with the potential number of customers in the building. So, based on the waiting area, they're proposing, proposing three employees, and then have proposed two tables for seating. So, this particular use would require seven parking spaces. That leaves 13 available for the other tenant spaces, for the other three parking, unit, tenant units. I know the pharmacy has a very minimal amount of customer area, so their parking requirements aren't any more intense than a standard retail operation, and the barber shop doesn't have extensive number of chairs. It's pretty, pretty standard. I want to say two, possibly. So, I do believe that with 13 spaces remaining available, if the other unit was, once again, a retail use or possibly an office use, like a real estate office, then definitely the site would be capable of meeting the parking criteria of the zoning ordinance. If it were to become another carryout restaurant, those certain aspects, how many employees they propose, how many parking, how many, excuse me, tables they propose, and then how big of a waiting area they propose could heavily impact the parking demand of a second carryout restaurant. But that's something that is kind of tied up with the site plan, the special land use review. And one other aspect, functionally for the, for this proposed restaurant, when it comes to restaurants, especially if it's more of a fast-food nature, they have, they would need a grease container or grease trap, storage system for any kind of frying that goes on. Those, if stored outside, those, we do require them to be within an enclosure. So, if they're proposing an outdoor grease container, and they're, you know, they're these garbage can-looking roller structures that are about three foot, four foot tall, but the, the current enclosure is not actually sized to accommodate a new one, so they'd either have to try and find a way to resize that, the existing enclosure. There is space behind the building for it, if it was adequately screened for an outdoor one, or there are systems to have them stored inside in a disposal truck and actually connect to them from the, through a spigot, basically, through the, through the wall. It could be done during renovation. So, we would just ask the applicant to indicate how they, if they're going to have, use grease, how they intend to dispose of it. That's an aspect of site plan review. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Yes.
Just a question on the site plan. Obviously, the building is there today, it has lighting, it has landscaping. What is incremental? I know about the dumpster and that, based upon it being food service, but what is incremental in the site plan based, or is this just showing us what's already there?
It's just to show what's already there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. It's one of the quirks of the zoning ordinance is that it always requires site plan review, even if the structure is already constructed, so.
Any other questions?
Yes, speaking of the site plan, so, is that bathroom already installed there, then?
To the best of my knowledge, they have not done any kind of, that kind of construction just yet. The unit itself has not been finished.
Okay. So, looking at the door to that bathroom for the ADA accessibility, I would probably recommend putting the door on the side of the wall here, so that's a straight shot for the AD accessibility.
But that's something that I will definitely make note of, and that involve, that level of review is typically done by the building department when they're, when they're doing the building permit, but it's definitely something you could note during site plan, and they will take note of during their review.
Any other questions for the, yes, Kelly?
I guess I have a question. I know generally we've done dumpster, and I understand this from right here, but have we requested that dumpster enclosures are in the back of the building generally, or to the rear of the property in our proposal, a carryout restaurant with a dumpster in the front?
That is true. We do normally want them to be to the rear or to the side of a structure. This particular site took an extensive amount of time going through site plan review. The applicant, the property owner, had a couple different engineers trying to find, and architects trying to find way to orient the site to fit it appropriately. We don't have, I can only think of at least, there's only one other that I know of that has a dumpster in this particular kind of front yard configuration, that's on Middlebelt down at Cherry Hill, that one, south of Roses site. But beyond that, you are correct, they normally are required to be in the rear or the side. In this particular situation, because of the type, the size and scale of the building, the adjacent single-family residents, it was, and plus, the making sure that the dumpster could actually be adequately accessed by a trash removal, that's the one, that's one of the reasons this, and to get the amount of parking on-site. That's the reason why it was placed in that location. It's definitely not ideal, but at least it's...
So, a curb cut on the John Hawk is a little bit ideal, and put the dumpster behind the building? Could you grab like 15 or 16 spots?
The issue there, I think, was going to be the number of parking spaces, then, because they, back then, I think we were limited, he was trying to get as many parking spaces as he could to fit the building, because that's, that's one key aspect of our ordinance, is that we don't have any specific lot coverage requirements or maximums for floor plan, but they are intend, they are required to make sure that the building footprint and the number of parking spaces are both, I mean, the number of parking spaces are, can adequately service the size of building they're proposing. So, in order to try and get at this size, this is what was eventually determined would work.
I guess my only concern is restaurant trash going to the front of the property.
Right.
I mean, we all see how it looks behind fast-food restaurants and carryouts, and now this is going to be right at the front of the property.
That is a very good point, and it's true.
Yeah, drove by there today, take a look at it, and there was some trash in the parking lot and on sidewalk. lot and sidewalk, so it might be like a recommendation to put maybe a trash bin out in the front. It looks like there might be some room to place it alongside the wall.
So, that's definitely another aspect that could help, because if you notice, a lot of our commercial sites, for some reason, have been removing those trash bins that customers can, you know, put in themselves. But also, Kelly, another issue with the trash enclosure there is making sure the doors are always closed. Have you noticed a lot of the issues we're having with compliance is making sure that those doors are closed? So, the intent of an enclosure with a gate is to make sure that, A, nobody can illegally dump into it, but B, that any trash in there stays in there and doesn't get blown around. So, and then C, with fast food, with restaurants, you're right, more trash is generated.
Not just more trash, it's different trash.
Right, true that.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
You're getting white stuff going out there, you're getting grease, they're going to have certain things in bags that's going to drip all over the place.
Yep.
And the problem with the dumpsters not getting closed, that's priority waste. That is our garbage company that's picking up, that doesn't like to open them, doesn't like to close them. That needs to get handled on a whole other level.
That is true, although I will say that we do have some property owners who definitely make that effort to go out and just close the doors after the thing is serviced. It's not, it's not their, well, it kind of is, but you know.
I can tell you ours, if we don't keep the gates propped open, they don't know that.
Right. And so, that's what I meant by the, it's, it kind of is the responsibility of the property owner that the day of their being serviced, in the morning, go out, open the doors, leave them open during, when they're getting serviced, but as soon as they're serviced, close the doors. That's how.
And I understand that, but I think part of the problem is that some property owners would have to leave them open all night. Some of these trash cans get dumped at six in the morning.
That is correct, yeah, you're right. That's definitely a problem with priority, then.
Those are the concern I have, is the trash at the front.
Is there anything else?
Was signage being proposed in this?
They haven't proposed it at this time. They will, if they do, any signage always has to get their own special, their own permit through the building department for signage.
Because there was a sign ready that was installed, but it had no display on the street along Inkster property, so I don't know if that was part of this or part of something else for the main building itself.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I didn't drive by it today. Last week, last week it was there, but... Actually, was that there before?
It's a four by something, what, sign?
Multi-tenant sign.
Yes. I don't know if it's going to be static sign back there.
I can't recall if they have an active site, sign permit. That's something I can note to the building department and see if they have an active one. If not, we have code enforcement go out and talk to them.
Is there anything else?
One more thing, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know if it's a building apartment one, but there was a mention on A3 for a roof vent, exhaust fan on roof extend 36 inches above air intake. I would probably just say, since there is residential behind, probably not have the vent pointing towards residential, so.
I would make sure, if you get to the point that you're making a recommendation of approval, probably note that as part of your approval, because that's a characteristic particular to the use that might, that needs to be made aware by the building department. So, I would, if you get to that point tonight, I would definitely include that as a condition of approval.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then. Next, we'll move on to a presentation by the applicant. Is there a representative of the applicant here?
Good evening. I was actually wondering if I can call also the property owner, who wants to help with the questions that you guys may have. We went over with Mario.
Okay, did you have anything specific you wanted to say about the application first?
I don't know, just any questions you guys have, you guys want to know, I'll answer.
Okay, so you're just open for questions at this point?
Yeah.
Are any questions from the commission?
We heard some concerns with the trash out in front. Do you know what kind of food service this would be?
Just a middle eastern restaurant.
A sit-down restaurant?
No, carryout restaurant.
Carryout restaurant, yeah.
Okay, so we wouldn't expect to have any trash on-site, other than what the restaurant itself generates?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Do you have an idea of what your hours of operation would be?
Yes, so we're looking to do seven days a week, 11 to 9 p.m., 11 a.m. to 9.
Anything else? Okay, I guess we don't have anything else for you at this time. If we do, we'll get back with you. Thank you. All right. We'll open the public hearing at 7:06. Does anyone wish to come forward and make comment? I'll ask again, does anyone wish to come forward about the application? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Is there any written communications?
No, there are none.
Then we'll close the public hearing at 7:07. And open it up for planning commission discussion. Gentlemen, any comments or questions?
I have one question for Mr. Ortega. So, I noticed in your recommendation, you referenced carryout. If we were to take this forward, would that be, would they be boxed into a carryout, or would they, okay, so it could not become a sit-down restaurant?
No, that's correct.
Their space is kind of limited, too.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Based on the building and the setup and the concerns that we have, can we propose to do this, but limit this site to one carryout restaurant?
Yes, you can. As a special land use, the planning commission can control aspects of the site. Because as a special land use, when you, if this, if you recommend approval, and if city council does grant the approval, the approval runs with the land. So, that could mean, in theory, that the entire site could be occupied by restaurants if it meets all the other requirements. So, obviously, they would run into parking requirement issues and that sort of thing. But, because this is a special land use, you have the purview to limit things like hours of operation, the number, the quantity on the site, because, once again, it's about making sure, the reason we have a special land use is so you guys have these tools, so you can ensure compatibility with adjacent uses, and making sure that it functions correctly.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry, one more. So, in your recommendation, you had referenced a grease container. Can we ask the applicant whether that would be relevant for your restaurant?
Are grease containers dumping the oil?
Yes. The oil is required. Okay.
Whether it's inside or outside, it's required.
All right, thank you.
Right, but the question would be, like, if it's going to be outside...
Or if they're going to have an interior grease trap.
Right. Like, if they have the interior. The question would be, would you have one of those systems where the used grease would be stored inside, and then a trash hauler would come in and connect to it, or...
It's one of the ones...
That sits outside? So, if you were to have one of those, you have to have it screened, meaning that it would have to be behind, you would either have to expand the existing enclosure. One other aspect is you could put it behind the building, but you have to put screening in front of the, in front of the location, so that way it's not visible from John Hawk either. So, you'd have to put up a fence. So, but you're, but you are proposing that it would be, you would be utilizing one of those outdoor ones?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The good thing is, they do have a door on the rear of the building, and so they would, wouldn't be, actually, the benefit is, they wouldn't be taking the used oil across the parking lot.
Yeah, right.
To the other location. So, actually, probably would be best that way. So, one aspect of that, might I recommend, is that if you specify that the grease trap be adequately screened, and the best location, meaning the rear of the building.
Okay, and we could expect you to approve that administratively, if we prove it contingent with these things?
Yes, because then that would be part of the minutes in the record.
As far as the location and the screening?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
So, if we were to make a motion, we would limit the carryout food service to building 1859?
Mm-hmm.
Because that one's, that's the proximity to the dumpster, and it's also, if you look at the back of the building, really the only place you could put a grease.
Anything else? Okay. Do we have a motion for the special land use recommendation?
Do you want two separate motions? So, I'll try. I'll make a motion for, to approve special land use, limited to one carryout at 1859, contingent upon site plan approval.
And the grease trap?
Well, do you want that now, or would that be part of the site plan approval?
Oh, maybe part of the site plan, yeah.
Yeah, the notes I had taken, we were going to reference the hours and the grease trap, but that would be part of site plan?
That'd be fine.
So, my motion would be to approve recommendation to city council for special land use for one carryout restaurant, specifically building 1859, at 1847 Inkster Road.
Support.
Motion's made and supported. Any comments or questions on the motion? Hearing none, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Bozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Mr. Steenberg?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now the site plan review. We kind of went over all of this, so.
Yes.
At this point, are we just looking for another motion? Yeah.
I'll motion to approve the site plan for 1859 Inkster Road, with the recommendation for waste bins in the front. The grease trap being placed at the rear with appropriate screening. Add that note for the ADA accessibility for the city to look at.
And are we going to approve the hours of operation? As the applicant mentioned?
Yeah, we didn't have any comments, so, and then approve the hours of operation to seven days, 11 to 9 p.m.
Okay.
Unless anybody had any issue with that.
Is that everything? Second.
Support?
Support.
Support. Any questions or comments on the motion? Did we catch everything? Okay. Would you take the roll, please?
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Mr. Bozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Steenberg?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we just have to go before the city council to get the special land use approved, and then you're all set. Okay, next item is zoning ordinance amendment. Okay, this is... Okay, we have to have a public hearing on this, too. Proposed amendment regarding adult-use marijuana facilities hours of operation. Mr. Ortega?
Yes, based on your direction from previous meeting, and based on items that have been, I believe it was mentioned at council, and we have received communication, or had discussions with the operator. Currently, the zoning ordinance limits the hours of operation for marijuana facilities to Monday through Saturday. Right now, Sunday is not permitted. And before you, as directed, is a proposal to amend zoning ordinance to allow marijuana facilities to operate from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. on Sunday. The text in front of you would just strike out the fact that no sales are permitted, and allow for the facilities to operate between 10 a.m. and 6 p.m. Sunday.
We have a report from the police department, but it just lists calls, it doesn't really make any recommendation, I don't believe.
That is correct. The police chief just wanted to make you aware and give you the data, let you know that these are the number of incidents and calls that have occurred up to this point with the operation.
They're all false alarms, anyway?
Yeah, a lot of them are false alarms. I don't know whether the intent, you know, I don't have any other further details, I don't know if it's just a highly sensitive system, or if there's just tweaking needs to be that, or if they're, represent, you know, solid attempts of someone trying to do something, but, according to their report, in the end, they've all been false alarms.
Okay.
These are with vehicles on-site, this is the building itself with these alarms, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
When did this marijuana shop open?
Yeah, it's been open about three months. Yeah. March, April.
Did you have anything else?
Nope.
Well, let's move on. Do we have, no, we don't have anything here from the applicant. Is the applicant present? Did you care to make a statement?
Good evening. My name is Douglas Stewart. I represent the businesses at this location. The false alarms are basically, it is a very sensitive system that we've explained before to the city council and to the planning. So, what happens, anytime it drives after-hours on-site, especially around the grow area, it automatically alerts the police, and alerts us, and if we're not quick enough to answer our phones, you know, and cancel the alarm, that's what ends up happening. Or if we see it on our phone, see that we don't identify who the car is, or something like that. So, if there's anybody loitering in the parking lot, or after-hours, or kids out there, it'll alert. And so, it just, that's what it is. We haven't had any incidents of break-ins, we've had no police problems, or no call-outs. It's been basically all false alarms, and the police department's done an excellent job responding and communicating with us, and that's where we're at with that.
Okay.
As far as that. And as far as hours of operation, again, we're asking for the Sunday to be open. Our competition, which is 2.7 miles down the street, down Ford Road, their hours are from, I think, 10 to 9 p.m., seven days a week, including Sundays. So, it just... So it just, the competition in the area is still open on Sundays, and it's a big profit margin not to be open on Sundays. You know, so that's where we're at. The landlord and the owner, Kathy Rifkin, is also here to represent the building and the landlord itself. Kathy, do you need...
Hi, thank you, everyone. I wanted to say originally, when we were licensed and all set for medical, we were approved on Sundays. We had that from ten to nine, and I'm not sure somehow, two things got dropped. That got dropped and, um, that's the most important thing to us, cause we lose eighteen percent of our revenue on Sundays. We have, uh, our cameras there, so we see people not, you know, trying to get in on Sundays, so we constantly see people there. And they did a survey, and most people's complaint was, why aren't you open on Sundays? But, um, so I'm not sure what happened when it went over to the city going wreck, but it was just dropped. So that's why we said, you know, we really need that back. It would help us a lot. We have been open three months. The police have me on speed dial and I have them on speed dial whenever there's anything, like we got, someone complained about grass clippings in the road. And so the police called me and I said, and then I just got to someone and right away they went out and took care of the, you know. It's been very minor. There's been nothing else. It's a, it's a wonderful environment. My son and I invested over ten million dollars in a dilapidated building, and that was in two thousand and eighteen. And also, what is tough is in two thousand and eighteen, you could buy, the, there was the black market came in after that. But you can get a pound of cannabis for forty-five hundred to five thousand a pound. Now, today, four hundred to six hundred, if you're lucky. Where, it's in a rut. There's gonna be fifty to sixty businesses closing, they said, because they can't keep up. Black market has saturated, but they're, they're gone, which is wonderful. But now the people are left picking, you know, legitimate people trying to pick up the pieces. So right now, we are really just breaking even at most. So that Sunday would be very helpful to get that back. Again, not sure why it was dropped. So, just, that, oh, yeah.
You don't have any immediate residential right on your doorstep there. Would it be more beneficial to go from ten to nine at night?
Oh.
To, to be on a par with your competition in another city?
Absolutely, it would be, yeah. Cause like I said, that's where we were originally, but, you know, we'll take what we can get, because we're trying, I said, and I were trying to make up for the money we put in, and we know it was well worth it, cause I hope you all feel, I think, I worked really hard. I was, they designed everything and made a nice building there instead of what it was. And, um, we work with our neighbors, like, cause they asked us sometimes to use the cameras because they had a mishap or something going on. So we can help with that, because, and the police have asked us for help, cause we have, uh, license place recognition and night vision and everything. I mean, we're as safe as you can get, and that's a primary issue, I feel, for, for any good business, but... And, you know, we're, and I'm always welcome to hear from people. If there's any questions, please, you know, you can get my number through the city, cause we care about the city. We have from the beginning. We've donated to the city, the high school and some other things, but we, we need your help right now to help get us back.
I see you had a nuisance, um, smell issue earlier in the year, and I see no other...
Nothing else. And you know what's funny? The policeman, again, he called me. It was a woman, and she lives on the very outskirts of Garden City, not even close to that area. And he, and so I told him, I said, recommend they check with the neighbors, cause you have the home growers now, you know, the caretakers. And someone could be doing that much, be what you're smelling, cause I was out there today a lot, and I walked around the building. Certain, there's no smell at a certain point. In fact, we're having trouble with, uh, there's a local guy that's been tearing up our entry, that we built a whole new entry, and he's parking a huge truck in the back there. And we, and we've, and he's back there now, and we've left notes to stop please and everything, and he keeps doing it, and we're not sure what to do, but we're gonna work, ask, but anyways, that's our problem. But, so, you know, we have issues too, but, um, we'll work with the city any way we can.
No parking on private property, no parking?
You would think, but...
And then it's a violation.
We've asked, we've left, like I said, we've left things on his windshield and everything, and he's there right now. I mean, he's not there. He lives here. He just parks that huge truck there.
Start charging him rent.
Yeah, I know, right, right.
Make some money off of it.
Right, right. And, and we are gonna have a grand opening on August ninth with a ribbon cutting, so, yeah.
I have a question. I know when we passed this and we approved it to go to council for recommendation, there was a screening wall that was supposed to be installed. Do you plan on maybe getting some revenue back to install that?
Yes. That's another thing too, because the way our property is, there's not a lot of grass right there, and it kinda tilts. And so it's hard, but we are willing to, now probably isn't the time. We'd be better off doing it next spring, but we plan on planting like a whole hedge and doing that, but it's a lot more money.
I, I believe the ordinance is, it's gotta be brick. I thought we went over that, and I asked for them to be able to put hedges in and...
Yeah, cause the brick doesn't go with our building at all.
Brick on a marijuana facility.
Right, um, and, and we have been, I have been in communication with Ms. Rifkin about this, and we're looking at different, uh, cross-sections for that. So one thing could be a brick, well, it could be a brick pilaster, so like, like every, what, fifteen to twenty feet? A brick pilaster with a, with a stone cap, and then in between have like a wrought iron fence or another type of screening with land, supplemented by landscaping. That's a little bit more, and you know, the wrought iron, but it's aluminum.
Right, right. And we have the black, but just the brick doesn't go at all.
I, I agree. The building's beautiful. I don't wanna see just a brick wall there.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And, and it, and, and this screening would be at max thirty-six inches in height. So it's not gonna be anything that's gonna be, cause the intent is to soften the edge, um, as, as, as we tend to do with our parking lots, with the new, new construction parking lot. We're looking at ways that also make sure that it, that's viable in terms of the amount of area that's available for construction.
Yes, right.
I'm kinda the inkstigator on this one, um, cause I heard you come to city council, and so I brought it to the agenda so that we could talk about it. And we did talk about it in the last meeting, and that's how we got to the ten to six. So for Commissioner Steenberg, personally, I, I would like to keep it to ten to six. I believe this would still have to go to city council, would it not, Mr. Ortega?
I'm sorry?
This would still have to go to city council?
Yes, yes, so this is a zoning ordinance amendment to go to them.
So, I guess my recommendation would be that we keep the language as if we go forward with this and not try to go to nine, just because it's gonna have to go in front of another body, and I would say, you know, let's give you the opportunity to open on Sunday and then see where it goes. You have only been in business for three months, and what I wouldn't wanna do is, you know, we kinda ask for too much too quick.
Okay. Well, like I said, we really would appreciate getting Sunday again to help us get back to where we are. And yes, we, we would definitely come back for the longer because of the competition, but grateful for, you know, just to get it back.
And just for information, in Westland, it does appear they're open from ten A.M. to nine P.M. In Inkster, uh, the two facilities in Inkster are right on, adjacent or close to Cherry Hill are open, uh, nine to six P.M. on Sundays. So those are the things, just...
Like I said, we had it. I just don't know how it got dropped, so...
Well, I wouldn't wanna change it to nine tonight anyhow. I was just asking that for reference, because we've already got this in the works, and this can, we can settle this today.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, if you'll have, we'll open the public hearing and...
Okay.
If you have any more questions, we'll call. Next, I'll open the public hearing at seven twenty-eight. If anyone wishes to come forward and speak on this item, how's your opportunity? Seeing no one, uh, do we have any, uh, written communications?
Outside of the, uh, attachment from, uh, police chief, no.
Okay. Well, then we'll, uh, close the public hearing at seven twenty-nine and open it up to the planning commission discussion. You have any comments or questions from the commission?
None.
Does any, anyone care to make a motion for recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll make a motion to amend the result, the ordinance to let House of Dank located at three-two-three-three-zero-four Road in the industrial district to be open on Sundays from ten A.M. to six P.M.
Okay, that's our recommendation to council?
It is.
If I may, Mr. Commissioner, just to make you aware, this is a zoning ordinance amendment, so any, uh, it's a, it's amending the language so that any marijuana facility would be, would be capable of abiding by these hours. So it wouldn't be specific just to them. It would, because it's, these are rules that are applicable to all marijuana facilities.
If we have other facilities open in the...
So if others do come, then they would be allowed as well.
That'd be fine.
Just clear, make it clear.
That's fine.
Okay, right.
And we had support?
Support, yes.
Okay. Any comments on the motion? Seeing none, would you take the roll, please?
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Bosie?
Epstein.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Steenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner King?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Your motion does carry.
Okay. Well, our recommendation is to approve to the council. Now it's up to them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business is schedule a public hearing. It's a request to schedule a public hearing for the following. Public hearing to consider special land use for an agricultural garden in the R-one district, uh, one family residential on the east side of Garden, south of Hennepin. Can you explain exactly what they wanna do there?
Yes, we received an application from the property owner for this site. Currently, it's vacant. They have attempted in the past to, uh, utilize the site for growing of some, uh, I believe garlic and other plantings. Now they, they wanna have, but they've, the operation has grown over time. They wanna be, have the ability to have storage, a storage shed and possibly storing some materials. So the only viable way to, to do this through the ordinance is to obtain special land use approval, so that way they could have a viable permitted use on the site. Because we do, uh, allow it as an agricultural garden, uh, in the R-one, after special use.
But they can't build a shed if there's not a primary residence there, is that...
Well, that, that's, accessory structures aren't allowed if there is not a primary structure. I believe the zoning ordinance says if there's a, if there's a principal use permitted, that, that would allow for the, for some type of structure related, because there's an approved use on the site. But I can clarify that, and we can, I can have that answer for you when we consider this, if you schedule the public hearing.
Okay, and do they plan on selling anything there?
To best of my knowledge, no. But we can... Right, yeah, like if they intended to, uh, establish a... If they do intend to establish some type of farm stand or some, uh, within the zoning ordinance, it would, we would classify it as a commercial operation. However, uh, as I recall now, uh, the Right to Farm Act, uh, does allow certain, certain types of agricultural enterprises to have commercial-related uses, uh, commercial-related facilities on, on those properties. It's usually intended for, you know, eighty, hundred acre farms that have an orchard or, or any type of, um, growing of agriculture to, or produce to allow them to have some type of commercial thing. I unfortunately have, have experienced times in which this gets carried to the extreme in some communities, but that's usually in more rural communities in which they bypass the zoning requirements for commercial operations and allow themselves to that.
Well, if we approve this change, could they later on establish, uh, a sales operation there?
I will have to do research into that, because, um, it will depend on our specific, I believe it will depend on this particular type of use that we would be permitting with the special land use, if they do receive it, versus what the, the state law, um, defines as an agricultural operation. And whether what we're approving would fall under that and then suddenly grant them those rights under the Right to Farm Act, so... I'll have to do more research.
Am I mistaken? If they did that, then they'd have to have off-street parking and...
Well, you would think, but unfortunately, these facilities tend to, once again, um, utilize the Right to Farm Act in a way that, in my professional opinion, is not appropriate, not adequate, because they use it to circumvent the zoning requirements, when the intent of the Right to Farm Act is to have agricultural enterprises with some aspect of commercial, but the agricultural, the Right to Farm Act's intended to defend their operations in a court of law. It's not intended to grant them permission to do uses. So I'm gonna have to do a little bit more research. I was intending to do this for my review.
Be better off just letting them build a shed.
I think, I know.
Uh, Mike?
It seems to me we ran into this same thing some twenty years ago, and it's, I believe the state law is dependent on the size of the property. You know that this is under one acre or does it exceed one?
It's definitely under one acre.
Yeah.
I am too.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think the state law will apply to this.
That's what I couldn't recall off the top of my head. I'm gonna, that's my, what my research will entail.
From what vaguely I can remember, and also, um, what would be the maximum permitted size of an accessory building? Could it be like a two and a half, three-car garage on this property, which could be a processing center for what they're growing?
Given the fact that this would be a special use review, you would have the ability to, to, uh, regu, to propose and limit the amount of, the size of a structure on the site, because that would, that would fall under the purview of making sure it's compatible with the adjacent properties. So you could prob, you could possibly limit that. I, forgive me, I don't have the application in front of me, so I don't know if he's proposing a structure at this time. But I do know that actually was one of the issues. The, the neighbors were complaining and they, about the amount of items stored. So the idea was let him have a, some type of structure too, so that he can store things neatly in a structure, so I...
Well, yeah, but they've got trailers and old tractors and boats.
Exactly, yeah. Right.
I'm thinking that if we limited it to a two and a half-car garage, which would look perfectly normal in a residential area, that would give them the opportunity to put a lot of that stuff inside.
And you could also specify that there shall be no outdoor, outdoor storage of materials, and so therefore, if they ever violated that, they would violate their conditions of special use.
Yes.
Can I just ask? I, I guess I, my big problem with this is there's no address. So I don't know what you hold, what we're holding a public hearing on, if we don't even know what property we're talking about.
Right, so the issue here...
A general vicinity, which is to me unhelpful.
Yeah, I, I can provide you with a, well, you definitely will be receiving, uh, an aerial photo with the property lines of the tax parcel. The issue here is that unfortunately, uh, I have been an advocate for trying to get addresses even on vacant lots, but we typically don't give addresses. We only give addresses to structures rather than vacant lots. I prefer...
Like Pardo.
Yeah, yeah. I prefer to give the addresses to any site in the city, but...
It's sorta kinda over here.
So I'm just guessing that adjacent property owner doesn't own this property?
That's correct.
So I think if we allow any accessory structure on this, we're opening a can of worms.
Really?
Yeah, because right now the ordinance is you can't put an accessory structure in somebody's main residence.
Right.
Unless we want this to go throughout the city, this is just gonna set precedence.
Unless we specify that it can only be...
I'm not sure what the downside of that. It would set a precedence, but I'm not sure what the downside would be, because a two and a half-car garage, I can, I can cite at least two different properties in my walking around to get my steps in, to where there are two different residential properties side by side with one owner. And they have a big house on this side, and on this side, they have a two and a half-car garage sitting all by itself with its own driveway. And, uh, the property I'm thinking of looks like a boarding house, because the big house that's on one residential property generally has anywhere from eight to twelve cars parked on it, and I'm trying to think of which street I was on. I live on Bach. It was either on Bach or, I, I don't recall. It was right in that neighborhood though, close to Middle Belt.
Yes, Frank.
I, I guess maybe I'm really struggling with this one, cause I don't even know what they wanna do. What is a, what is an agricultural garden?
They basically wanna be able to farm some, some garlic and some other plants.
They don't understand. I mean, I could do that in my backyard now. What did...
The issue is that, um, and he actually, they, like, like I mentioned, they, they actually have been farming and they have been able to do... and they have been able to do that, but then the issue has become, they started bringing items to the site and they started leaving their trailers and leaving their things. So that's why code enforcement started writing them tickets.
I think they had the things there before they started gardening.
They might have done that as well, yes. Actually, they, actually, I think you are correct, you absolutely actually are correct.
What's the real objective, I guess?
Some of those things.
Is it so that they can leave equipment there?
Yes, so the, the objective is that because they, they, they want to utilize the site, but they're not ready to construct any kind of structure, house, I should say, residence. And so they have been the subject of code enforcement and tickets to, to deal with the, the, the storage of materials without, the outdoor storage of material, of items, when they're not allowed to, because there's no structure, there's no use.
Yeah, I mean, the site looks kind of trashy because of all the stuff they've got.
Exactly, so the, so giving, so in my discussions with the applicant previously, when he's talked about his violations, I said, you need to have a viable use on the site. And he talks about farming, I was like, so I have to let them know what's available to them. And so I said, technically, you could apply for this, and then you could get a use. And then the benefit I, in theory, would be, and Kelly addressed some of your concerns, by, by going through this process, once again, special land use gives you guys a lot of leeway to determine what is appropriate on the site, and limiting the size of the structure, limiting if he does or does not have a structure, and limiting and restricting it to no outdoor storage explicitly as part of the approval, I think is one way to, one way to go, if you feel that like having this enterprise on this site is compatible with the adjacent residences. You know, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those things where you could see how it could function this way and how someone might need this, but whether they operate in compliance is, it's up to the characteristic of the person and whether they want to fully comply and maintain it, or whether they, or whether you're giving them something that's going to create a, make a poor situation worse.
Technically, we could approve this, approve the storage structure or accessory building, that two-car garage, let's just say.
But he doesn't even have the application that they want.
Yeah, but I'm just.
No, they've submitted, it's, it's, I just have it in front of me.
I'm just saying, but then they could just choose that to farm no more, and then we have an accessory building that's just going to be used as a storage yard.
One of the, one of the.
Hearing this explanation, it sounds like maybe they're looking for an excuse to create a storage yard here. And they're growing a couple of flowers and some garlic over in the corner.
Because to me, if they were just farming, they would just done that, the neighbors wouldn't care, right? There wouldn't be any boats or trucks.
Exactly.
They've been doing that for the last couple of years.
The problem seems to be.
I think the problem is now is all the stuff being stored there.
Yes, and that, you're absolutely correct.
I think maybe we deny this one, because this sounds like a storage issue more than a gardening issue.
Yeah, well.
The property owner has been made aware of his options.
Do we still have to schedule a public hearing for this?
Yes, because he has a option to ask.
Okay.
Whether you approve or not is, well, based on information we'll provide you.
We would get more information if we approved the public hearing, so maybe there's still some questions, a lot of uncertainty, and maybe that would give us an opportunity to speak to the applicant to get some clarification and ask them these questions that we have. Because we're not approving the said approval, we're just approving the public.
Correct.
Okay, well, someone care to make a motion to schedule a hearing?
I have another question, if, so if I was to make a motion for a public hearing, could we also require that it includes the, the address and a statement from the applicant on the intended use?
So the applicant, his applicant, he asked him in an application, it does have a brief narrative letter, and then it does have a site plan, such as it is, that just identifies the, the where, where the location and where the crops are going to be. As I mentioned, right now, the site doesn't have an actual at, physical address, but I can definitely point out, you will be provided with an aerial photo indicating the exact thing. And it's, and the address, it's right, yeah, right, yeah.
How do we get a tax bill without an address?
It has a tax property ID, it's a parcel identification number.
This is a parcel ID, you have to go back.
Yeah, there's, technically, it's two lots.
So you'd have to combine them to do this?
That would be probably one of my recommendations, yes.
Technically, two lots, so this could be over.
We feel to have you recommend us.
But it's just the back half of two lots, I think.
Criteria to help prevent misuse of the property in this.
Probably about a half an acre.
You're in a whole bunch of variables here that don't sound.
Yeah. I mean, I'll make a motion, let the guy, whatever. I'll make a motion for a public hearing to consider special land use for an agricultural garden at the east side of Garden Avenue and south of Hennepin. That's going to be interesting.
Can I put a friendly amendment on that?
Sure.
I'd like to see an address for both of these properties and the total amount of square footage as it relates to an acre.
Mm-hmm. I support that.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
I don't think I got support.
Oh, was there no support?
I was supporting your amendment.
Okay.
I'll support.
Take the roll, please.
Do this correctly. Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Steenburgh?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Bosie?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Walz?
Aye.
Chairperson Matt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, comments from commissioners regarding planning and zoning matters. Mr. Daniels?
I'm all set.
Yeah, no comment, okay. Mr. Walz?
Nothing.
Nothing.
How's Frankie's coming? We'll call it Frankie's on Ford Road.
Well, that's 153.
Oh, Bar 153.
The empty lot.
The empty lot.
With the broken cinder blocks in the hallway.
Not the burnt-out building. I have not heard lately from the building department if, if the applicant has been making again. I do know that they were employing an engineer to determine what kind of footing and necessary support structure they needed, because of, something's going on with the condition of the soil. And so that's the reason why they haven't done any additional activity.
Yeah, they were working to tear it down and.
Right, yeah.
Nothing.
Yeah. Uh, no, this is with the old Bar 153, it's on the north side of Ford Road, just east of Merriman. So you've got rallies on the south side, you've got the auto repair at the north, right next to the vacant structure, or vacant lot now. It's got the black screening in front of it.
Liquor Garden to the west of the Liquor Garden on the north side of Ford Road. Liquor Garden's probably the most prominent.
It was a building that caught fire, now what, 16 years ago? And, and so various owners over the years kept saying they're going to repair it, repair it, and repair it. And it's gone through various steps of demolition, going through the process. The city got very close, going through all the, the motions to get it to have the city tear it down. But they, shell games moved around and different property owners obtained ownership. Now, there is a property owner that has moved forward, they have a site, they have a, they had a site plan, that's another thing.
So my question was about that, and also, do you know the name of the new owners for the former Kmart property?
I do not know their official name, I've met with them, I've met with someone who, last time I met with the owner of the property, it was several months ago.
Is it a big corporation or private individual?
It's a local individual that has several businesses in the area. So they're local.
That's all you can say?
Right now, yeah. In about five minutes, I guess.
I know he's been in touch with some other officials in the city. Yeah, okay.
Mr. King?
I'm all set.
I would like to know what it would take to get the offer of parking back on the agenda.
That, that's definitely on the, that's definitely on the list, just with the number of items. I can, I can put it on the next agenda, if that's what you want, absolutely.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Hopefully we can get it passed council this time.
Yep.
What was the offer of parking?
There were complaints that we were blocking sidewalks and stuff, and snow emergencies, nobody had where, nowhere to park. So we kind of gave, we had a discussion on letting people park in front of like the porch on their house. So the.
The ordinance right now is you cannot park in front of your dwelling. I think we were giving up to like 20% in front of the dwelling that you can actually, basically fill it in the service walk between your driveway or the grass, in between your driveway and your service walk.
We gave it up to 20%, if I remember.
Yeah, it was, it was up to 20%. Not to exceed.
People, people have a lot of cars, a house down, a couple from me has seven cars parked in front of their house every day.
There's one down by me from probably the 30s that block topped their whole front yard, and they have one car.
Really?
So they have a big parking lot in front of their house, all blacktop.
Commissioner Bosie?
I'm all set.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ortega?
None of this time.
Nothing else?
Yeah.
Hey, you ain't got anything for us?
Thanks for putting up with me.
Our pleasure. Okay, next regular meeting is Thursday, August 14th, 2025. I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried, meeting's adjourned. Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned.